...with that and give me a timeframe on, and they just didn't inform me. Great, you know, so I drove around it, turns out it doesn't have to do with that at all.
All right, let's get this puppy started. All right, we will call to order the development township planning commission work session for September 20th. Start it off with our roll call. Dave, I am here. Jesse?
Here.
Nick?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
John?
Here.
Casey?
Here.
And Todd, all right.
Yes.
All right, approval of the agenda, I think we got it pretty well filled out here. Anything to add to it or anything to review additionally? Okay. Make it a motion to approve. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Support. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we will move forward. All right, we will open the public comment at 6:02. We have no public, so we will close the evening, the public comment at 6:02. All right, we'll now just move into our review of the agenda items. Just go right in order on those. First one is Trinity Equipment. Looking at that, that looks like it's pretty, pretty straightforward for any, anybody see anything that has any concern for them? I've not been out to do a site, but I don't plan on visiting all of these, but I did not see if anyone get a chance to go see that. Unless there's something that jumps out, it's not in one of the pictures.
What were you saying, in the, the report here, again, Steve, talking about how to join the parcels out, out there?
Yes, it looks like they're proposing to put the building right on the property line. Eventually they combined them, so. A lot for that.
They just own the two parcels right there?
They do.
So, on this print from West Shore, it says, proposed warehouse 2,800 square feet. And on here, it says the request is for 2,400 square feet. This thing says, because it's right here, right? My reading, I mean, I've just got new glasses on.
It does say 2,800.
Okay, so there's a little of a discrepancy.
There's a, it's a forty. That proportion should be corrected at 2,800.
Okay, so the staff, okay.
Yes, that must be correct.
Oh yeah, and the, the special land use application also says 2,400 square feet.
Okay.
And so does the site plan review application, they all say 2,400 square feet.
Right. That's what it is. Yeah, the show of the building, I mean, forty by six, so it's 2,400.
Oh, yeah.
Loading dock, that's another quarter.
And here it says proposed development, internal loading dock, and it looks like they've made it external instead of just a hall.
So we want them to just re, write that to 2,800? It looks like this, I mean, this is a new building, not an addition, correct?
Correct.
Hello?
The plans that are being approved say 2,800, but the application says 2,400. We should be able to approve 2,800. Let me just make sure that it'll be in the motion of resolution, I'm going with 2,800.
All right, so we can just clean that up with a termal check to move that to 2,800, to prove it at 2,800 square feet.
This, on this map here too, is that, there's like a said, proposed retention basin, is that part of this too? Or is that something else, or just something they need to down road?
Yeah, that is going to be part of the site plan.
Oh, the next, next thing?
Yes, so that's where their water, water management.
So I can't tell the height of the building either, it's, it's 22 eight on the short side, but there's no measurements on the tall side, unless I'm missing another picture.
The applicant will need to clarify that. I do believe I calculated it out at less than the required 35 feet.
I figured it would be, because the short side's 22 eight.
Yeah, and it's standard four twelve pitch.
Okay.
The 26 feet of this scale is correct. Some clarifying building height, and then in the motion, making sure that it's 2,800 square feet. Has to go through all the other stuff. Do they have that put together already to combine the two lots, is that something that's already in the works?
They haven't submitted an application yet, so that'll need to be a conditional approval there. And they won't be able to, that is only proven until they do.
You guys talk about elevation, don't you say? Yeah, just to make sure it's under the 35. It was like 28. Yeah, I think we're under that, but I think we just need to, it's not on the actual site plan of your building. See anything, Jesse?
You know what type of business this is? It's just, it's like material, storage, goods, commodities.
Like train parts or something like that, I looked up Trinity Equipment, like, train parts? I just looked on their website a little bit ago, freight cars and stuff, I always wondered what the website said, it's hand oil on there, so I just found their day of oil.
They do something like the motor block between the big, like, box, kind of getting frames, and then the, maybe or carriage.
I had some other metal pieces I saw too, that are on the website.
Sounds like wholesale, but the original application, 2010 was retail.
Retail and distribution.
And distribution.
They're focusing more on distribution now.
Yeah.
I believe the hand soil is retail, and they're not doing that as much anymore.
That's where the property is.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we had to, remind bird, guys.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Get those cleaned up, the condition of the pool on the combination of the two lots, getting the building height, and 2,800 square feet. Anyone else see on that, any other concerns? Ready to move on to the next one? Move on to portable pool water. Building itself doesn't have, it says 22 feet in height, but there's just the two pictures without any dimensions or anything to it. I know our, our building experts, does that sound reasonable as far as the build, the side height? Doesn't make a catch.
Steve, is this part of the industrial park?
This is not.
No, okay, so it's privately owned by these folks?
Yes.
Steve, on FBIS map, is that blue line that had drawn on there, is that the, the lot line adjustment?
Yes, that's approximately where the lot line will be actually on your adjustment.
That's, I, I think both, I mean, both those parts are over by the same person, they're little square cube. Is that part of that, or is it?
It's confusing.
Yeah, I believe that's the existing building, correct, in the little cube?
Yeah, that's the existing building, in that smaller lot.
Okay. So is it, so then, with that blue line, that'll be the new line, so that square will, those would be two lot rectangles, like that's what's going on there?
Correct.
See. Boundary adjustments are already gone?
They have their application.
And they have it into the road commission, which is the, right, so that's contingency protection. This is just going behind, deeper into the lot, that's the new, the new building is just going behind the old, existing building, right?
Correct. And there's also going to be a larger gravel parking area on the side.
Looks like they have a parking covered already.
Is it obvious to have a contingency plan if they deny his new driveway? And he had to use the old driveway, is there any concerns with that? Is there anything we have to?
Would you like to just administratively change that to using the existing driveway, since it would be the driveway?
Well, don't they need approval by the road commission?
For the new driveway, yeah.
There'd be contingent on that.
Yeah, but if they deny it, and we approve it with this, then he could do it that way, to say, well, we're going to use the old one, and that's what they'll have to do, adjust the plan.
You could also state in the motion that if it's not approved, they can alter the plans to use the existing driveway.
It looks like the perfect setup to put walls in there, where you want for, for different businesses to have, to be running their business.
Yeah.
I wonder why anybody would want that many walk doors otherwise.
Yeah, I think that might be his long-term plan.
Oh yeah.
I told him if he wants to do anything else, would that get you to come back to the planning commission?
So really, other than like building specifications as far as roof pitch and making sure we can, he's got it as a generic 22 feet. Is there any, is there any way to, hopefully you might know, we just need to see the, maybe a little more specification on the building itself? Or do you guys feel okay with just moving it to 22 feet?
I think we could, if you want to say something, you just say that it meets the height requirements.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, he's got a lot running there, because it's 35 and 12, so.
We just figured the last building was going to be, what, 20?
Only like 26.
But he says this one's going to be 22, so this, something doesn't, either pitch isn't right, or?
I think it's because, is that one wider, it's, in that, or no?
It was 40 by 60, I think, the last one.
Well, it technically would be on the front, probably 60 feet wide.
Oh, okay, so.
With that little, the enclosed, low rooftop piece, so that pitch, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's higher. It's like a double look, kind of on that.
Any calculations there? That's your round of potential questioners? I think a lot of this gap there. Forty, okay, 40. See, this must be with the new, back from 30 feet to the back.
Right there to the back, is the new, right here, will be arching back, but.
Yeah.
And those are with the adjustment to the lot, correct?
Correct.
Anyone have any comments, who see anything with that that's concerned? They don't show anything for what they're doing, either watered up or something.
It sounds like a horrible thing, like, site plan review, they should have this whole list of stuff in here, right?
Yeah, we have 30 items.
And they're not in here.
Parking, we've had parking plans for a year without this stuff.
Because we've been trying to get more.
Assist them?
Yeah.
Is it 17.5? 17. 17.5, then you can also weigh any of the components. I don't think there's going to be any water facilities in the building.
Just start with water, sort of?
Yes.
I don't think horses, but. As a group, what do we, what do we want to do with this, like, exterior lane, nothing there?
You can see that lane signs isn't on there. See the lighting signs isn't on there? That is, it is stating in there that it is the minimum. Include a minimum of following information.
And C, it does say the planning commission. In his discretion may waive any element, component, or other matters otherwise required. If such matters are not deemed necessary for review and consideration. And for lighting, he does say in his narrative, four overhead doors and four service doors with exterior lights over each service door.
Isn't there a check off list that originally went with that, like with the application? If they're gonna have them, just have that to know what they needed to include in it, is that a weird? Even if it's not for this one, just to be forward. They sort of works with this so that we are gonna use.
Yeah, it was like, I remember seeing that one time, though. It was a part of the application.
Yeah, yeah.
And then for something like that, there was just a checklist, remember that as well? We just had the checklist and something like, so it's included, it's not included on the map if you just draw, you can draw like a circle or whatever over the door. But it's included in the narrative pretty directly, you just have like a little note next to that, like lights included in the narrative over the doors, something to that effect. Does that ring a bell, Steve? A checklist of some sort?
Yeah, for that is. On the application that we hand out.
Right.
It's the same checklist, I believe it's the same item.
Right.
Seventeen five, just attached to the application so the applicant knows.
And just signage and lighting is the only thing that's not addressed, there's no, I mean, lighting, I guess, back up then. Lighting is mentioned in the narrative but not on the plan. And then there's no message or there's nothing on here for signing, so he's not going to have a sign. Or if there's one that's already existing, if he's not gonna change it, we don't have to do anything, correct?
Correct, there's a sign there.
Yeah, we're missing the second page of the site plan review application.
I will contact them.
That's not gonna answer the question about lighting and so forth, and it sounded like there's restrooms or. Just an unheeded button. Checklist would be good.
I just, I really hate this because a lot of things should just say, like exterior lighting signs. It should just say it must be in compliance with whatever section it is so that they can look at it. Landscaping, there's another section in here that they could look at for landscaping, like, I don't, it's just silly to ask somebody to put it on their print. Like, stuff changes, like, I, I mean, we're here again tonight because life doesn't always go as planned. And I hate to force people, oh, that's not your landscaping anymore. Like, what do I care if they change their landscaping after the fact? It's frustrating that this is incredibly detailed here and, but, I think the part that I think is the most funny is it tells you preliminary architectural sketches or a general statement as to the type of construction and materials. So we don't even require you really know anything about your building, just get shot in the dark. But we do require that your lands, all the size, type, and location of all your proposed landscaping. Like, this is really not business friendly at all here and I, I, I guess we want everybody to follow it, so a checklist would be great. But I'd like to see putting in a top 10, like, these are the things, like, the planning commission's not even gonna see your plan unless you have these things. Just tell us the heights of your building, tell us the square footage, things like that. But then these other things should just be like, you know, there's sections of the zoning that said, just be in compliance with this. Whatever that means to you, if you wanna have these bushes and you, on your site plan, they're here, but in the end they're over here, but you're still in compliance, like, what do we really care? That's just my point.
Well said. Our problem is we try to enforce something.
Right.
I don't, that means nothing to me, I'm just enforcing it, that's, it's.
It doesn't translate well, you're right.
All right.
To the ordinance, to the application.
Right, there's not a good flow to the building. Like, things just change and it's, it's unfortunate, but you can't always get what you want. You wanna build one thing and then it just doesn't work out.
Steve just printed the books.
It would take us forever to change that.
If we were to go to that, we could take something from two pages down to one page and make a pretty, like, easy delineation, just, you can move right through it. But we could figure out what the 10 things are that you, you know, or whatever that, I don't know the exact number, like you said, the things you asked. Lighting, what lighting on the buildings, or if you had the height of the buildings, if you had the location of the buildings. You have your setbacks, you have a lot of things in here that's required, but a few of the things aren't, I don't wanna pick each thing apart and go, well, you didn't miss, you missed number 16 or you missed number 22, so we have to postpone it till next month or.
Right.
So to me, I think, to me. All this stuff in here is on any professional set of site drawings I've ever seen. The stuff's all standard as far as locational scratch, legal description, blah, 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 this stuff's always on a professional set of drawings. I think this is just basically telling you or giving you a reminder, hey, number one, have a plan. This is not much of a plan because to me, this is a piecemeal thing, okay, I'm just gonna do this. Oh shit, I didn't realize that was gonna happen, I didn't realize this was gonna cause this. But we need to spend the time and money into a full, working drawing and plan that's done by a professional. This stuff's all covered, this stuff's on every standard drawing already. So I think a lot of this intent, when it comes, you're not just building a 20 by 20 pole barn, you're actually building a commercial building on Whitehall Road. You're gonna need a D celling, you're gonna need a 40 foot wide drive approved by Obama and blah, blah, blah. Why not have all that stuff done if you're really gonna do it? I get it, people don't wanna spend the money on that until they know that they can get their special use, for example. But like with this one, it's not a special use, it's just a site plan review. What are you really reviewing? Because it's some scratches on it, on some scrap paper. You can't give this to Paul Brown to get a vaca permit, you can't give it to the drain commission, get any kind of a drain approval for anything. I mean, you can't give that to the building inspector for the building. So it's like, I think a lot of this avoids the piecemeal. Process, I guess. You know, some stuff like this, you know, like delineation on your front plate, okay, you know, is this a floodplain, probably not. But that's gonna be on a standard drawing for my show, for example, you know, or in a, in a site help or whatever. So I think that's a lot of the intent myself, I read that.
I don't doubt his.
My stuff changes all the time and, yeah, you don't need necessarily to put the plant names on there or something. But at least have a 3D drawing of areas for landscaping or something, whatever, you know.
It forces us to make some, I don't know, some judgment on what he wants to do, like, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna challenge his business model. I'm not sure what it is, other than he's gonna build pole barns that even indicates that new building would be used for personal storage. But all I know, this is boat, this cousin's RV, and this is just, you know, you'll build a pole barn every once in a while. I, I don't think that's the way it is, but it's, it is, it's just a little rudimentary for us to follow the ordinance. Or align with it.
All I'm saying is that we shouldn't be approving any site plans that don't always have the covenants of making sure they're following the zoning ordinances that are already written. Like, okay, I mean, I think we should say approving this every single time, we could say this, make sure your landscaping complies with this section. Make sure your exterior lighting complies with this section, make sure, shouldn't that just be a given and be all site plans must conform to exterior lighting section, whatever, exterior signs, whatever section? Some of these things you could just write must comply with and that would just be a given for every site. And whatever iteration that ends up being is totally fine because it's in compliance. I don't wanna start, well, I don't wanna look through, he gave me a landscaping plan right now and I had to go for every single site plan and look at his bushes and look at the zoning ordinance. I just think that's a waste of our time personally. I think you could just tell him to be in compliance with it and that should be enough without me looking at his planting beds. And honestly, I don't care.
In other words, by the time we see it, it ought to be fairly obvious what the intentions are, what the details will be and that they, they, they've come to us with, within compliance, right?
Well, I just hate to make, I know, it costs a fortune to get prints done and fixing every little mistake every time. I, I would feel bad about requiring some people to get a professional set of drawings. Like, truly, he is just building a pole barn on a very wide and skinny parcel, long parcel. I mean, it's, I don't think, the road, the road commission's definitely not gonna do anything, or the NDO is not gonna do anything about any additional lanes, nothing. I mean, it's a free for all already on all roads, so I don't think they'll care whatsoever. They may disapprove his driveway, but then he just has a driveway already, they can't tell him he can't use his current driveway, so what do I care?
And is there anything, I mean, really, he wants to improve his driveway?
Right.
On top of that, he must make it wider.
He wants that curbing, which is nice, yes. I'm sure the road commission will be thrilled about that, but.
That definitely needs to be.
This speaks to exactly the heart of what we all think, of that, there's just way too much stuff in here that I am not, I am a late person reading that and to look at it all, I couldn't tell you if it's all in there or not, but I, if you tell me you have to have the building specs on there, that helps me.
Right.
If you tell me where the lighting is, that helps me, the other stuff, the floodplain, how the hell would I know?
Right.
I don't know, I mean, I knew you were gonna get that on a professional drawing, but how would you get that if you're not gonna require it? Like you said, in this case, I don't think you need to require a pole barn. I mean, it sure seems like that's a.
Need to build one on there before.
Yeah. That is our, I know we wanna have this for, for more detailed stuff, like if you were putting in, in something that had a much bigger impact on, on things. I, I totally get that, that's, that's where you.
I understand you, Jesse, I mean, yeah, you're.
It's all standard stuff to me.
Well, yeah, well, you're, you're into more too, like, the normal person, I guess, if I say that, doesn't do it as much. You're not involved in that stuff as much, they don't, they'd rather just.
Because it's plain service. I'm on pole barn, I'm on my property.
Unless I absolutely have to go outside of what I can do, then I do what I can, that kind of thing, which I know it's not as great for us, like, in a written drawing like this and stuff, but it's usually.
In some cases, it's insufficient sadly, I mean, some people, the thing is, there's all of these things in here and the more professional you are and the larger your development is, the more likely you are to just have it anyway. So all we're doing by forcing the little guy to do all this is just punishing the little guy, just saying, oh, people with big pockets, you know, no big deal, they easily, like, the progressive AE print that we got for McDonald's, that had more stuff than any of you even remotely cared about. They had every single thing in there, but that's just not reasonable to expect from the smaller people that, I mean, I'm pretty sure that, that progressive AE filled it out for the owner of McDonald's, this guy hand wrote this himself. Because he's just a guy that wants to build a pole barn.
At what point, because it's a commercial, do the other standards start coming in, like restrooms and exit signs and?
That would be a.
Exit signs, yeah, that's the building code, that's the stuff, restrooms, no, that's a storage building.
But he wouldn't get occupancy without those proper things, so we don't really need to.
Which we don't need to worry about that, we don't need to worry about anything inside the building, well, actually, right, we're just looking at overall site. What is your site, right, is it here? But isn't that usually on some of ours, the restrooms are in our list of things to check off, is that one of the things we have to look for? I've seen them before on drawings when they've turned them in before, like.
Because I'll show them, that's what.
But then like that speaks to your point with a professional drawing, when it was done, that had a lot of extra stuff in it that I really don't care where the bathroom is. I don't care, that's nothing new to us.
But more of how does that building impact the environment?
Exactly, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, like in this situation, I guess, you know, I mean, this, I mean, you know, sometimes myself, I go do site visits, sometimes I don't. But like in this situation, like I said, I'd like to know what the neighbor is next door, what is it, who is it, I'll close it, I have no idea because the plan's not. And so I can't ask, I can't ask a logical question, hey, what about this neighbor over here, or what about that? You get that, so now do I have to go do a site visit to get the information or are you supposed to have it in front of me?
Yeah, I would put that in the top 10, like, what are your neighbors? And, and number 17, stormwater, that is missing, I would like to see what it's gonna do with stormwater because we've talked a lot about not discharging your stormwater.
We're having problems with it already.
There are several things in here that to me are very important, but they're all lumped in with other stuff that doesn't matter, so it makes it even more confusing.
So do you change the minimum to the 10? Or whatever list you have? And then, then if you say, I don't know how you made that so someone else has.
You would just probably say, if applicable, these additional things, if this applies to your site, then let us know.
Did he put in here what materials he's planning to use? Based on the drawing, I would assume that he's using a metal siding, metal, yeah. Concrete floors, I mean.
Now, if the person is there that's presenting this and we could ask some questions.
It would be helpful.
Yeah.
You could at least get some, you know, flush some things out like we're doing right now.
Right.
Like, without having an answer. What kind of floor do you have? And if you could have that ahead of time and say, you'd like to know what your progress or like to know if you.
Casey brought up the point about Whitehall Road, maybe, you know, then he said disarray, I'd say haphazard.
Yes, that's, that's right, yes.
And the reason why I, I say that, like Holden Road, you know, I don't know, do we have any desire to consider beautification of these commercial properties? And I'm not thinking crazy landscape, but, you know, let's face it, he, he's surrounded by grass, well, what does that mean? Is it lawn or is it just?
Weeds?
Weeds, you know, things, things like that, that, that's my point, do we, nobody ever, or is there a consideration of the board and the committee to steer these commercial properties into something that's?
Aesthetically?
See, I gotta be careful in my terminology. See, I gotta be careful in my terminology, not uniform, but well-kept or neat or.
Right, but you can, I mean, like this, just as this for example, you know, I mean, like, gravel drive, pole barn, some weeds up front, okay, but you can have a whole different deal coming down the road. If you got a hard foot paved driveway and a little bit irrigated lawn up front, a nice little sign, there you go. If you say like that, I mean, you do that on.
Like, some of the businesses, I'm aware of, run that road, you know, and so forth. You know, that would sound like more and more pressure to put on these small business people trying to start up a new idea or business plan. But on those two roads in particular, it'd be something that, for a later date, maybe we.
We're gonna have our joint session, that would be a good thing to bring up maybe at that particular time to.
Yeah, that's true.
And see what the feeling is on it, cause if the goal is, if we can do that down into your five-year plan or something, you know, that we can incorporate something. Again, we're trying to remove things and not add more things in, but at the same time, clarifying some of it might help too.
It sure is nice to see certain businesses that go the extra mile and made improvements, I would say. The FM bars, one example, you know, Ace Hardware, things like that, but others just sort of sit there in the weeds, who barely.
I think, I think a business has a built-in incentive to put forward an image that is presentable or whatever, but they choose not to. Like, I just don't think that, I guess, like, making something instead of losing something that any level of government should have the ability to enforce. A property owner should be able to do whatever they'd like within reason. And I mean, we're already requiring all sorts of restrictions and things to be done as far as safety and like, long-term planning thought. And then to add the requirement of, I understand, but I just think that there has to be a line that can't be crossed, I mean, like, requiring somebody to beautify their property, and you're already requiring all these other things, I just think it's just too much. I get it, but I just don't think that's the position of any level of government, for sure.
Can you reach out to him though, so he's prepared for the, cause we're gonna ask him about his stormwater?
Yes.
We're gonna ask him about his neighbors, his lighting, and if he, it says lighting over the doors, but I just wanna make sure there's no additional lighting over the overhead doors, and whether he's having a signing. You said you're sure already that he's not having sewer water to that building, or you're not quite sure?
I'm not quite sure.
Okay, so maybe ask him.
But he hasn't mentioned anything about.
Okay. Just so he's prepared when he's, cause I'm sure he'll come and that he'll know what we are gonna ask him. And that was just my list, if anybody asks more for him. I think I took notes based on what everybody was saying.
Yeah, I think, we have some questions we can ask, if you can, if you're prepared with those articles, that would be good.
I think it was neighbors, stormwater, lighting, signs, sewer water, materials.
Oh, I forgot materials. He will put on that building whatever's available that day.
And do we need to let him know that the plan will include using the existing driveway in case it's denied? Or would we just at the time of, when we do the motion?
We can just do that in the motion.
Okay.
And that should be in the motion because it looks like change in access drives is only in the category of major change.
Okay. All right, if we get those things addressed, I think that will help us. All right, moving on to the next one, everyone comfortable? Okay, we'll move on to, it's Duck Creek RV Park, I've heard so much.
Sorry, you're wasting your time.
How about a quick summary, Casey, are you able to share what you?
Would you like me to step down?
Yeah, that might be best.
Do you wanna come over here?
Sure. All right, the indoor pool building was the wrong dimensions on there. It neglected to include the stick-built bathhouse that will be connected to it, so. It's those little squares up there, that's, it totally was missing that section right there.
Put some lapines in that pool.
No, it's more, more of a, it's got kiddy features in it, yeah.
That's what I think, that's just an extension.
Yeah, correct.
So it's, it's an approved plan, we just need to adjust the plan to what you do dimensions?
Correct, yep.
There's just beyond the percentage that.
Yes, cause it's a lot, yep, it's a lot bigger than it was supposed to be.
You said stick-built, what's the original structure gonna be around the pool? Just for curiosity.
So it's, it's like a glass and like aluminum structure.
So it's just 43% larger as a quarter?
Yeah, the new, it's, yeah, it's 6,441 square feet instead of 4,500.
And Stephen was able to approve the, or approve the?
The mechanical.
The mechanical, okay.
Yeah.
So we're just doing the, the other ones?
Correct, yes, just the indoor pool building.
Any questions?
Do you guys work on, is that, that's a whole, this is like a whole new section that you were?
Correct, yes.
Are you working on that right now?
Yes.
I was gonna say, I thought I saw it going up and down the whole road, I seen people coming up the.
Oh, yeah, yes.
So this was all, this whole little water park deal was all in the 21 who tried?
Yes, yes. Yeah, it didn't, it didn't have all the detail that it has now.
Okay, it just had like an overall area.
It told you exactly like what it was, but it didn't have, like, the locations weren't on there. But it's all in the same, we had the whole area, yeah, we had the whole outline and then everything that was going to be included in there.
I think it looks good.
Because it's been in the conversation today, would it's a, what are we gonna do?
Fancy word we're doing? Major amendment?
A major amendment.
Right.
Would, we want to see, like, cause you said this is a new area, that would be a new stick-built area for.
Oh, yeah, yep.
Showering and everything.
Yes.
Typically, would we want to see a, like a rough drawings of it, materials and?
I really think a lot of this stuff, I think all that stuff was in.
Yeah, our original, what you guys approved to begin with said all building heights must be in compliance with our zoning. It was, yeah, that part was still out, so they are.
Yeah, but trying to get, this discussion, trying to bring up something, by the way, Casey.
Yeah, that was already in there, so it is in compliance. Oh, I have been told the prints are sitting on the desk over there.
They are on Chris' desk.
Okay, so I suppose we'll.
So Kevin had a question for the pole barn.
Yeah, I can grab one if you want, David. I remember we looked at it, it was early, a year ago, but.
Yes, it's giving, I think it's giving you the location on the site. Oh, that's one showing a pool mechanical building that had to get slightly larger.
Someone's Steven already.
Yeah, that's the administrative one that he did, that he approved.
Say 27%? You have 0.7 there. Should it carry on another decimal point, or was it exactly seven?
Might have been close. I'd like to make a motion to round out so that we.
So on this one, this is a proposed building, 90 by 50, which is not correct.
Correct, yep, that's, that's just showing the new dimensions of the mechanical building.
Well, that looks pretty straightforward. You will probably abstain from.
I will, definitely.
Do you want to be, we could, we be presenting?
I have to, yes. He's, he's not available, our children have many activities that he's been.
He's not available?
Pole barn, he.
I was really mad at him because I'd rather be there with, but.
He's got. All right, any other questions on that? All right, we will move on to Valen Cummings and his industrial parkway. He's also looking at a pole building. 40 by 80.
No, it says, we're following this wonderful book. It talks about number 23 as proposed deed restrictions and restricted covenants, which there are for this, all the properties in the industrial park, I believe. So does he need to provide that for us to review, or just say he has to follow it, or?
I suggest not fully providing them. I think that the ones that come from the county end up being 400 and something documents. So decently large, obviously, where you can't, you know, you can't have residential and all of that type of stuff. And this is, these are a little lot, cause they're in a technically condo association. And some of that is, has been and is being adjusted in their part of the master deed. I mean, the primary restriction is for light industrial use only.
What about the hauling away of material, or if he, like, has to strip the site for this? Does that have to stay on site, or do you?
I think it's a good question, but if, so 19, if it's more than 10,000.
Well, I'm just talking about the, because it's probably.
Right, as far as your restricted deed, I'm guessing there is part of the restriction on that. I, I could reach out to, I'd probably reach out to Farah and then a lawyer fostered and stealing here.
Probably should find that out.
Yeah.
Was it, was it Ryerson Brothers that built on the corner?
Yeah.
Cause they, I mean, they clear a little much too, but I mean, it's true.
Yeah, they stripped their entire site and screened it out, so it's all gonna start leaving next week.
I know. That's why, that's why I mentioned it.
They stripped it?
They did, they screened it.
That's why I saw the screen, I saw the screen sheet there.
And then screened all of it, and they will start hauling it out next week, and they're gonna take it to all over the county.
Did you guys mention that when you approved their site plan about the removal of materials? Was that part of it? That was.
Well, we don't know what's in the, I mean, I would assume that's.
Not our district.
Be stripped of that covenants, but like, well, the, who follows up on that?
That's true, who is responsible for following up?
I mean, the county still holds a decent amount of responsibility now. As they're moving away from it, I think that's getting, that's moving down as the condo association is being formed. It is for now, but I can, I can message Farah tonight about that.
I mean, cause wasn't it, is the sale of that property, wasn't that contingent on that? There was something about contingent on that when he was buying it.
With Ryerson?
Yeah, cause he wasn't yet the first one?
He was the fastest moving, for sure.
Yeah, I just.
I'm coming to us, with plans.
Yeah, I just, I remember there is something with the county.
Yeah.
It was a contingent on the county doing something.
It might have been.
Purchased a property.
I don't remember specifically.
I wanna go with that. You were going?
Yeah, it wasn't too long, but he was, I mean, he was moving ahead with plans right away.
Was this here he built the, of the building?
Yeah.
Oh, please.
I think there's little, small sections that aren't those.
Scattered all over.
Yeah, there's some weird.
There are, as far as I understand, part of the reason the documents are large, cause like the condo association document, I think it's 80, 80-some pages, but contamination site documents, I believe, are significantly larger because there's differences.
Differences, right.
And so that was like that, the parts above A-gard, the part north of A-gard, which are all of these properties that have been sold. These are different restrictions, and this is where your infrastructure went in, whereas below A-gard is considered phase two, it's considered a different phase. But the county's also looking at selling, but I had, I inquired with Farah and the county lawyer to make sure to look at the differences in the restrictions when they were going through that. And I would revert back on what the difference is between phase one and phase two, as far as that goes. But I don't remember anything specific about Topsoil, I mean, either one of those properties, which I mean, they're right next to each other, and so, yeah, I'll make sure to shoot that message out tonight.
Hard to see. Maybe they'll do mud bug. So impressive.
I see that guy with the mud. I haven't seen Draven though.
I wanna talk to Matt, we're gonna go along. But yeah, I mean, it certainly is, you know, it's an issue. There's the logistical issues of all the barriers that were put in place with the weird tax credits. That weren't very applicable, and probably almost a waste of the $2 million that the county put in for infrastructure and all of that type of stuff. And then there's the concerns about the actual site contamination as well, which I, I talked to Fishbeck, which is the company that is hired by Eagle to monitor the site. And then arranged with the county to make sure that everyone knew that they still had to get access to their wells for checking, because at least a major concern from Eagle is the water, which they're still highly active with, and Eagle is still even continuing to upgrade that processing facility that's there. And so I know the water is being looked at very closely. Cause there was, I mean, when some stumps ended up in the way of the one little two-trail thing, Fishbeck got a hold of me right away, and I had to get a hold of the county to make sure they could get to their spot. But as far as I can tell, Fishbeck is that, that active monitor of the site that relays that package.
Right.
That's why I see the truck around, I didn't know what it was.
But it operated that, that water.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I just, it was, it ran around and removed what Fishbeck was.
You're in the same, gonna be in the same conversation, unless there's nothing mentioning of any lights. There's, it does give the location on there of where it is, it gives you the driveway, gives you a lot of the information in here that we're looking for. The lighting, I know, is a lot of times. I, it, the lighting, I know, is a lot of times, does it affect the neighbors, or is it, you know, lighting pointed in directional towards a road or anything like that? So, I, is it something we just ask? You know, maybe this top ten list is our stuff, you know, we can, these are the ones you gotta do, but the ones we gotta make sure in our plan include that. So, we can probably put a pretty good list together of things that we can have on that list. To me, where it's located, I don't know if lighting is as big an issue there, where we, you know, if it's near a residential or a main road, or. I guess as long as he doesn't have a marquee sign or a.
Steven, do you know what type of contracting this firm does?
What's he does?
Small carpenters and.
No, they do small underground, they do water services, sewer lines, septic systems. We hire them for some kind of, I don't know. I think it's a lot of work. Mostly the small sewer line stuff. It can be a hotspot out there for small sewer line. Yeah, there's a bunch of them. Well, Ryerson and Dyson, I just.
And it's limited use out there, you know, I mean, there was the, the plans of like some sort of big corporation buying it up and dealing with it.
Well, I think if I had the county finally lowered the price, see, forever, they had such a, they had a ridiculous price.
Well, they were asking thirty, forty grand an acre.
Right, thirty, yeah.
For four pages of restrictions with city tax. Uh, five to eight grand an acre.
You said five grand an acre?
Five to eight, better than where it was yet.
I was gonna say, I've heard other guys, everybody in small businesses, they're jumping on it.
Yeah, and these were the uses that you were going to get out of that, they had, there were a bunch of grand plans. Um, a large corporation went ahead and jumped through so many hoops and invested so much money, it would make sense for them to buy property anywhere else, um, to deal with that, so.
I, they mentioned several things, but the, there's no stormwater plan or anything, there's no building height. There's a, there's a sidewall height, but there's not a, there's not an overall weight.
I don't know if that's, if that's how we approve these, is, you know, we'll prove it so you're under thirty-five.
Yeah.
I, I guess like you said, we say, you have to be within the guidelines.
Right, yeah.
Then it's much simpler. I'm not gonna get my tape measure out and go up there and go, hey, no, you're off six inches. And he's got the two shipping containers just behind that, which. Boy, he's doing fourteen height, isn't he? There's that just sidewall.
Fourteen sidewalls with a four twelve pitch.
Be ready on twenty-one. About seven foot height for sidewall. And then we don't have the drainage or any of the other stuff that. So, we're, we're pretty much consistent in all of these that have been very long. We probably need to ask him about the same, the same things that. My personal opinion is, I guess we just need to, I mean, they, they, these drawings need to have these items on there, or else we take the items out of here. You know, the exception would be, I, I would say, is like, you know, Steve could look at some stuff, and let's use Casey Waterpark as an example. And that is within the footprint of an existing facility, so now we don't care about, uh, your neighbors around you because the existing facility is already there, right? So, I'm saying, but Steve could say, no, we're gonna waive that for your site plan because it has nothing to do with, you're in the middle of an existing complex, for example, right? So, we don't care about the adding, propping, service for that, or maybe even your drainage, for example, because you're already in the middle of your own thing, right? Right? So, I can see waiving certain things for expansions or.
So, something like a checklist where it either.
Check it off.
Or you write any.
One of the.
Right. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, but just following these items, I mean, if it's a brand new site, I think you gotta follow the items, that's why they're in.
So, in this case, if you were to just put up gutters or just let it fall off the building?
We don't care about that, we don't care about that, we just need to know that, we need to see that he's gonna be controlling the water out of his own site in some way, shape, or form. And not digging a ditch over Ryerson's, and dumping it on the ice, and say, why do you come, you couldn't do that, then it's a problem.
Yeah, or should you just say.
We don't care to get gutters.
Stormwater will fall.
Be waiting. There's runoff, there's runoff off from his parking lot, there's runoff off from his building.
How was it working?
Like that one that we had, the issue where the water was running off.
As much, there's still gonna be some.
I just think it's important for us to make them think about it, because drainage is important. And you can't, it's not like after the fact, like, oh crap, that's going the wrong way. Like, if he, if you do the drainage before, if you shoot some grades to see what's gonna happen before you build, then you'll know whether it's gonna work or not.
Yes, in case, I think that's reliable, these thirty items are for, just to make you think about what you're doing.
Yeah, it's true.
Okay, yes, need you to put your driving with on here, because our ordinance says it needs to be twenty-four foot wide, do they know it needs to be twenty-four foot wide? Can they just build sixteen and that's okay? If it can be sixteen, let's change it to sixteen. If it needs to be twenty-four, it needs to be on site plan, so they're at least aware, it needs to be twenty-four, right? That's one of those numbers, like the two pole barns on your property, I don't care if you have seven, I don't care if you, I know. The thing with, why, why do we, why do we set a limit on something that doesn't necessarily alter with the.
Well, in, like, eighteen, like, I'm, I'm not, I'm not an engineer or anything, but why do I, as the planning commission, need to know the existing and proposed, um, contours of the land? Like, what is it gonna show me on the planning commission? I'm gonna, what's gonna be the red flag, like, oh, that's not, that doesn't work? Like, what are we looking at there exactly for that? And the delineation of a floodplain, like, what am I, as a planning commission member, doing if somebody told me, yep, we're in the floodplain? Like, okay, good, how does it affect me? And how does it affect the other residents and the neighbors if somebody is, I mean, good luck getting insurance, but. Wha, why is that, just specifically those two things, why are they in here?
Like the floodplain, for example, I could see, I mean, I don't know, you know, in certain areas where it's really wet. If you have a, say, a two acre natural swamp, right, and then you wanna fill an acre of that, where's that water gonna go? You're gonna push it over, out of the mine ore, now my swamp got bigger on my property, I'm going, hey, now my crossface is flooded because Casey filled half the swamp over there.
Can you fill a swamp without a permit?
Which I agree, does it all.
Oh!
This could create enormous problems.
Okay, yep.
I guess you'd be able to without the shit.
Yeah, that's true.
But probably not just include that origin there that we used before about the water being.
Right.
Sorry, these stays on your property. Proposed topographic contours, for example, I guess, if you're building up on top of a big hill and it's just all woods right now, fine. Now, if you go pave two hundred foot square up there and you're downhill from that, that's a problem. If you're not doing something to take care of all your own offwater.
So, basically, all of these are in there because of your effect on the neighbor. Because like the topo, for us, it doesn't really matter, like, at the campground, we take out hills and put hills where we want them all the time, but it doesn't affect anything else, because it's, I mean.
I guess, I mean, that's, I guess, that's a hand conversation, like, earlier about this. Really, that's, that is the purview of the township, to protect the property rights of the next person.
Yes.
So, that, that should be the main purview of the township, protecting the rights of the neighbors, really.
Making sure something.
You can do whatever you want, but.
Right.
To an extent, you cannot harm your neighborhood, sorry, uh, harm your neighbors' property.
But just saying that they have to provide these things to us does nothing, because.
I guess.
I, without being out on somebody's site, I have no idea whether what they're planning, until it's all, like, even, even in our development. Like, sometimes we're like, yep, we shoot the grade here, and then we're like, okay, that's not the best place for the drainage, and we move it somewhere else in, on our own site. But I don't, I don't see how we're supposed to know these things. I just think we need to tell people they need to be in compliance with keeping their stormwater on their property.
And that's, and that's where I think you end up into a problem, like with this here or this over here, is, you know, there is no plan, there is no, there's no.
Right.
So, then you hire bulldozer Bob that doesn't even own a, a laser.
Right.
And now you have a problem.
Right.
When you push the water out to the neighbor's property, for example, because you didn't have a plan. There's a lot of what I see just about leaving.
I guess, like you were saying, yeah.
It was like, it's less problematic in the sand country, than it is in the lay country.
People think you can do it.
Where it's glad, but.
They don't do it every day.
It's still, we still have a standard for the township for a reason, you know? And I don't want to make it any more difficult for anybody either, I mean, I like it simple, but I can see the reason these things are in here. Like you say, a lot of the standard stuff is to make you think about it.
Oh, what I'm really saying is I feel like number seventeen, eighteen, thirty, um, twenty-two, twenty-one, they're all part of stormwater. There's so many of these that maybe we should just make, you know, we probably could end at like fifteen with a stormwater section and then be done with all of these. It's, the more complicated you make it for somebody, the less likely they are to have any clue what to do with the delineation of the floodplain. And a lot, it, it can be expensive to hire somebody to come in and do a topo, and they're very time consuming, so people may not. This, this is maybe too much for some people to provide us. Other people, I'm sure, will be just fine, like, we have a topo on the whole campground, so we can provide them easily, but.
And, and even like on your campground, though, I mean, at this point, you know, for the initial development, yeah, you need that, but any kind of stuff you do on the real side of it, you know, it doesn't matter to me, in my eyes.
True.
I know.
It doesn't see how detailed this needs to be, you can get existing proposed topo off and do it. Yeah, I showed you how to categorize it, I don't see how detailed this needs to be.
I know we're all about like reducing the size of this and trying to be less intrusive, as I hope we're all important with that. But like, you're saying, and especially for new site buildings, it gets really, like, some of this, it's all there for a reason, and, uh, and it might be able to be consolidated in some cases, but it's easier to take care of it before it gets built, or address somebody's things than to deal with it after it's a problem. But also, to, to pay to have somebody do this, like, yeah, if you did that, it would all be there, it would all be taken care of. But like, I build websites for people, right? And our clients come to us, and sometimes they don't have money, and it's like, well, you can do it yourself, and I'll give you all the instruction that you need, and you go do it. Some people have more money than time, and they just pay us to do it. Right, so what, what I'm thinking is, and I know that we wanna reduce this, or reduce whatever, but to make it easy for people to do it themselves and be in compliance with all this, what if there was just like a hopeful instructional packet of like, how would you provide topographical contours? How would you, uh, you know, do the floodplain aspect of this?
Where would you find it? Where would you? Well, you can give them website, you can give them, you know, say, go to.
Get some instructions, like, yeah, if you wanna do it yourself and save a ton of money, have it. And you could probably include that packet with the application or the paperwork, um, but some people are just gonna pay something to do it. That might make it easy for people that don't have a ton of money to do it themselves, um, still be in compliance.
And that's where I guess I look at these, I understand where this guy's coming from, he's putting a pole barn and two shipping containers on his property. How much simpler can there be, you know, to, to really put something on it? But we also require that we know, need to know where the lighting is, we need, so there's some things that kind of bleed over, we need to know some things, just for general information. Because one of the things we always get is, well, why is that now lining me when I'm trying to sleep, it's pointed right at my bedroom window? And can you turn that, and then you got neighbors taking care of something we could take care of, like you were saying, the preactive part versus the reactive part. Just to have some of those things, and I guess that's. You know, with the property and parking lot and building and your wireline, your sewer line, and your clearing work and this and that, it's been, it's been a hundred and three hours, solidly. You can get a nice little simple site plan down for this, three thousand bucks, I think. How much is it in the whole scope? To have a thrown out plan that's reliable for township, and shows there is a plan on everything else, you know what I mean? All right, what's left?
Good.
I guess, yeah, farther down the road.
John, I love your idea, by the way, just to be, because I'm that guy that's like, I'm gonna spend a thousand dollars doing that. Spend a thousand hours doing it.
It's like an accessibility kind of thing, how everybody has three thousand bucks? I mean, but if you put in something that's.
But we already spent it off. Yeah, and that's, you're gonna spend here, that's intended.
I get it, but at the same time, probably helpful to say, you can do it yourself.
Yeah. All right, last one is the draft zoning ordinance for solar energy systems and ordinance changes. This is what we've been working on, we put that thing together, this is pretty much, this will be pretty much what we had discussed.
So, I did add in, um, section one, it's a correction to the accessory buildings. When we made those changes, after they codified it, they kept subsection, um, H point two. So, some zoning districts are in there twice with conflicting restrictions, so this one will just remove the conflicting restrictions. And I was not able to add anything to ordinance changes, but to specify that no changes made at the, um, at the board stage.
So, our basic, this is just, need to have someone bring it forward to approve it, take a vote on it, and it's ready to go?
Yes, I did notice there's no, um, no height restrictions for brown energy systems being administratively approved. So, if you wanna keep that at sixteen feet, um, the approval of the draft should just, um, in the motion to say adding provisions for sixteen feet, high requirement in subsection C.
And I just had one note on subsection B, part one, for every solar panels installed on the rooftop of the building shall be set back from the building edge at least a distance equal to its height, and the possessive pronoun of it, I think, could at some point be questioned. Be nice to just spell out explicitly what it is instead of pronoun.
That's kind of confusing anyway, we think, I remember going over that before, we're like, yeah, what, equal to its height?
Right, what is it?
Well, yeah, what's, what's that?
The height of the panel?
Yeah, the height of the panel.
Oh, awesome.
See, didn't, didn't, when, back when we were dealt with this before, Lorraine said, that's, that's not what the building inspector said. The building inspector said it was, do you remember, yes.
Yeah, because that was, yeah, Lorraine just.
Right.
I remember something about that, I remember it's, seems like a problem, but I don't remember the specific.
I, you know, the building inspector said, like, oh, there is a distance that has, has to be above the front edge for the fire, the work, you can walk around.
I guess that's.
Can't we just, can't we just pick a distance? I mean, it, it, does the building inspector have any idea what, I mean, because if you have, does it have?
Or won't that be in the building, I wonder, I don't know if any of my solar panels were built toward that house. It seems like there are.
Yeah, there are.
Right.
Rooftop units, I should say, is less.
Well, and what is the, what is the point of this? What are we trying to save from what? Because that will help us decide what it, what it actually means.
Yeah, I would read it as the height of the solar panel, so if the solar panel is a foot taller than the, the surface of the roof, it has to be a foot, at least a foot from the edge of the roof.
But why?
That was just in there. You can take it out if you'd like.
Well, if, so if, talking about some sort of access with the fire department, I mean, something like that might make sense.
Right.
Do we want to just check, um, with Troy for the building code? Then we need to.
And I mean, it could be the same.
Right. I mean, you could literally say, what's required in the building?
Right, we could just put, it has to be a foot off the edge of the...
Rely on a section that says it has to be installed for the code.
Except for that, maybe the building permit to install solar panels that exist in building, right?
They are, they are required.
Okay.
I don't suppose that...
You're probably not to be, to mind existing building.
So that covers that, then. All right, so we'll do that, and so what if we just scratch that? If we gotta get a building permit anyways, then why do we care where the rest is? Why would we care? If that's what we determined by the building.
Yeah. It doesn't, if there's already a set distance in the building code, that doesn't need to be in the...
It's not a static thing for us, really, is it?
A lot of these panels are just flush to the roofing, the shingle.
Right.
So does that, you, you don't want them up to the edge of the roof for the gutter, do you? Set, set back.
But do we need to tell you to do that, or did you do that because that's better for you, and more practical for...
It would be a building code thing, I would think. Here, ice dams, and there's probably fire issues...
Well, I'm sorry, if the fire department's on your roof, you might have more problems than just damage your... Never been on my roof before, so...
I mean, we could, you know, Steve or I could check with Troy in the building code, and if it's just covered in the building code, and they have to pull a building permit, we can just eliminate one.
I don't know where that comes from.
This is, uh, I think, it's a, it's a better building code thing.
See, we do have that package, we made it.
Less rules, we'll keep them separate, and that way we'll let it... So you think, take that out?
Well, let's find out.
It's already covered.
Kind of open.
Let's find out.
Or if, if it's not, then we put in there back six inches from the edge of the roof, or whatever. That's the way it starts, it starts to read, and then it gets into, it's distance equal to its height. If we just said, one foot from the edge, or whatever, there'd be a much easier way to put that, if that's the case.
It's not in building code, they need to adopt it in building.
Yes.
No, their book needs to get smaller, too.
Yes, I, I have a question. C. one, only in rear and side yards. Yes. What about accessory buildings can be in the front yard, right?
If you're set...
Yeah.
So far, Matty?
So we should match that.
Yeah, I think that's...
We can make that match.
That's, I don't know, maybe someday.
But that would, that would be, that'd be fair, though, to match it with accessory buildings, because...
Well, and it already reads as matching for accessory buildings, as set for in that first sentence.
Oh, yeah, should we permit it as accessory use? Is that what you're saying?
So, I mean, you, you could just, you could just eliminate the first sentence.
Yeah, they, yeah.
And it goes by accessory building rules.
All right, yeah, just eliminate the only here, side yard. Here's the accessory buildings.
Right, same subject.
Aren't good catch? Anything else?
Well, I did still keep, so for solar farms, it's beyond accessory use. I did put that as a special use, we can change that to permitted use if you'd like.
I don't think so, I think it should only be on certain spots.
What's missing from here, just lake, the lake zone?
Uh, lake in RM.
Is that the...
Oh, 'cause it's all of those only, what's even missing? So...
It's like camping, solar farm.
Not like solar farms fit in Lake or RM districts. Last time I talked to consumers about solar farms, they were looking at between five hundred and a thousand acres.
So why does it, why do we have to say all those? If, because if you're talking about setbacks and things up there, it's just not gonna fit. So, do we really need to list every zoning district that they're allowed in and just leave out two? Or just put nothing? Because there's a lot of, there's already stuff about whether they'll fit on the parcel. And what if you had a huge, huge lake lot, where you could just walk up on solar farm, then...
You wouldn't have to worry about trees on the lakeside, so...
Right. I just, when I read that, the first thing I think of was like, oh, let me get into the book to see where I can't have it then. And it's like, it's so, and all the...
Yeah, I guess if you are looking at a solar farm, you're probably not...
Right, I mean...
I do know in those districts, they, um, solar arrays and farms are listed as special uses. So this is essentially just a repeat, or recap of all the districts where it's listed.
For solar farms.
Now, I'll double-check.
Is it D instead of I, so that's a bit confusing with the word? Does D, like industrial, like it's...
In mine, there's D, industrial.
Well, and Steven, where did the verbiage come from that talks about abandonment and decommissioning? It sounds like that could be applied elsewhere, are there...
That is what the ordinance already said. I didn't make any changes to that section.
So that's, that's been written in already.
Yes.
C, should, that's the part that we're, the, the one should just be included in the paragraph. Technically, you can't have a one without a two. That's like honors English eleven, like, you can't, it just is included in the paragraph.
You're numbering something that's only one.
Right, you're numbering something that's only ones, just put it in the paragraph that you're already talking about. You're welcome, Mrs. Townsley.
I think all this initial solar stuff came from theatering several years ago. And we modified it a little bit, but he basically just put the boilerplate stuff that was already...
Yeah, I think so.
So I guess that stuff came along.
We, I think we could, there was a lot of things from other places, and just...
There was a standard thing here, he brought us. So we have to buy them again.
I think a lot of times when a lawyer brings you something, and you're like, I have no idea what that means, let's put it in there. I, I'd like to figure out what some things mean, and maybe not put them in there more.
It's like, we're like, harder, and then harder to do after.
Did you give his responses for everybody on the, the meeting?
I gave your responses for everyone, but I got response, I got, I had responses from a lot of people. And so, I think I sent out, didn't I send out the official confirmation about that?
Yeah.
Seventeen.
Yep, and so I have, I think, only really two people. You were one, maybe two, three people set, like a list of stuff that they would like to see included. Decently limited, the beautification along the two roads are included in the list, for stuff for that. And, yeah, anyone else has, anything else coming up?
The seventeenth of October, six p.m.
Yep.
Hopefully, everyone can make that, there's always a lot of, you get to cross a lot of bridges on that one. You can be part of the PC website, we'll find out where your loyalty is either with us. Your own tribe.
Let's see, we're all going down tribe with them.
All right, anything else? All right, if not, I will make a motion to adjourn. All who favor, say aye. Say aye.
Aye, both.
I knew we'd get to one. Thank you, everyone.
Do you notice that Steve is doing the job down here for the culprit?
I'm gonna sue the county.
He threw it to the south.